Are we ready?
We're ready.
I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Crystal Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Warren Robinson.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Reardon.
Here.
Commissioner Mark Tapley.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Dylan. We're gonna start with the invocation. I'll go ahead and do the invocation, and then followed by the pledge, Commissioner Tapley. Stand with me. Sorry, we do not have a pastor here tonight. Father God, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you for this time that we can come together, Lord, and talk about the business of the city, Lord. I wanna start by praying for our neighbors up the road in Ruidoso, Lord. Just be with them, Lord. We pray for safety for all their citizens up there, and they seem like they can't catch a break. But, Lord, I know you're in control, and nothing takes you by surprise. So, Lord, I just ask that you just be with each and every one of them, Lord. For those in Texas, Lord, I have to mention them, and, Lord, I pray that you would comfort those parents tonight and the families of all of those that lost their lives, Lord. And again, I know nothing takes you by surprise. And so, Lord, I just pray that you would just lift each and every one of them up, Lord. I pray that as we go through this night, Lord, that you would be the one that would lead us, guide us, direct us, and protect us in all that we do and all that we say. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please follow me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Main Street can't make it today, so they wanted to pull it from the item, from the agenda.
And what am I looking at?
Presentation. On the first page, at the bottom here. First page.
Presentation.
Oh, on presentat-- okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Oh, I gotcha, I gotcha, okay. Sorry about that. All right. We're gonna move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Robinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
To clarify that motion, Nolan can't be here for item one, so we can actually pull it here under the approval of the agenda.
Oh, okay. I have a-- yeah, let's try that again. Let's back up. We need to-- I need a motion to approve the agenda minus item one. Sorry about that, Dylan.
So moved.
I never think of presentations as part of our business, but it is. Okay, so a motion from Commissioner Robinson with that adjustment, minus item one, and a second from-- I heard two of you. Commissioner Tapley? Okay, and can we put up the vote, please? And motion passes seven zero. Sorry about that. Did not click with me that the presentation was part of it. My bad. All right. We are going to move on to public comment. I have nobody signed up for public comment. Is that correct? Nobody? Okay. We'll move on to the city manager's report.
Good morning, Madam Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Commission. I'll just keep it brief. I'm not sure if everybody is aware, there's some major flooding in Ruidoso. It's gotten pretty bad. Our fire department is on standby to go out there and help do some evacuations and rescue if they have to. We're also-- our civic center is on standby also. They contacted Jerry to see if we'd be willing to open our civic center if we have to, so that's on standby. And then the fun center. Such a relief. We're here. You guys, July 18th is the grand opening for the public. I'll do a ribbon cutting at 5:00, and it'll be open to the public, so exciting.
That is very exciting.
And that's all I have right now.
Okay. We will move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission.
Just got one. I just wanted to note the passing of-- he's not related to me, but he's Larry Rarden is his last name.
I saw that.
He was Doug Nelson's father-in-law, and he actually used to be our mayor at one point in time. So, I just wanted to note that. He was a really, really great guy. It's kinda sad that-- so.
I didn't know him, but I read about that, so I was hoping you would mention that.
Said on our picture up here, he was mayor from '89 to '90, so I didn't know when. I thought it was back in the--
Eighty-nine. Eighty-nine. I wasn't even here in eighty-nine. Okay. Yeah, all right.
We'll send flowers to the family. We'll send flowers to the family.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they're here. I think they're down in Texas right now.
They are.
Yeah.
We'll send a card.
Okay. Is there anything else?
I have something.
Yes.
I participated in the July 4th parade on Friday, and I had a lot of help. And so, I wanted to acknowledge some of the people that helped me with the float, Community Power New Mexico, and they are also going to be providing tools for us for the cleanup. We usually have a shortage, and they are going to be helping us get enough tools for that day, so we can have enough tools to distribute to the people. And quite frankly, the volunteers are growing faster than I could even imagine. So Evan Lambert is with Community Power New Mexico, with many hands. Courtney McCary Squires, she didn't help with the float, but she helped with the passing out of the flyers. We-- I just met this young lady, and she's with Just Serve. It's a volunteer organization. Her name is Macy Neufert, and she helps to organize-- organize-- well, places that need volunteers and volunteers that need places. So, this is really a good place for her to start, you know, with the city. And she has placed the cleanup information out on her website, so I'm very happy to have her on board. And she brought six children with her, so I was really impressed with her dedication. KALH Radio, they actually helped with the placement of the float, and just to get everything on there, and that's Chris and Reenie. And then, of course, the District 5 cleanup crew. Warren Robinson, of course, was there. And then, one of the ladies from our organization, Vesta Edmund. And I wanted to say something about the cleanup is actually helping me and the district. I represent District Number 5, and the annual neighborhood cleanup was something that was started back when I became a commissioner. So, now, this is my sixth year. We have a couple of things happening in the area. Main Street is part of District Number 5, and they are doing a record-breaking, I guess, you know, getting everything together to open up in October. We have the Dudley Community Center and Park. They're in the final stages of putting everything down, especially for the park, the swings, and I don't know what other equipment is gonna be there. We have the F4 Project, which is on the corner of 54 and 70. We have the Sacramento Family Park, and we also had the sidewalks put in from Second to Eighth Street, and now they are finalizing, and we'll be opening the ink well. So, all those things are happening in District 5, and it just kind of helps with getting people out to show that we wanna keep our city clean, so that people are proud to open up businesses. They're willing to participate, and we have sites that have a lot of history, and we wanted to, you know, continue to encourage people to help us out each year with the cleanup. It is gonna be on July 19th. It is called the Alamo Gordo District 5 Citywide Cleanup. It's from 7:00 AM to 12:00. We are signing up people for the cleanup. You have to be elderly. You also have to be in need of services, and currently we have more volunteers than we have properties, which is a great thing. The Dump Your Junk, we will have, I said five, but it will be six locations to dump your junk. You can be high-income, you can be low-income. It's all free, and so you can get that done. Also, the shredding will be from 10:00 in the morning till 12:00 at noon when we close, and that is going to be at 523 Maryland Avenue. So, there's only gonna be shredding at that one location. But the other locations that will be manned, of course, we will have dumpsters at the community center, which is on Maryland, which is the Dudley School, the Dudley Community Center and Park, Indian Wells and Scenic, 2201 Puerto Rico, which is the Alamo Gordo Senior Center, 817 North Scenic Drive, the New Beginnings Church of Nazarene Parking Lot, and then Panorama Boulevard, which is next to Fairfield Inn, and then Walker Boulevard. This is near the baseball park. So, these are the locations that you can take everything to and dump it off. The only thing is that we're asking you not to bring is no household items or appliances, cell phones, batteries, electronics, ink cartridges, motor oil, antifreeze, rechargeable tool batteries, vehicle batteries, and large scrap metal. So, anything else that you have that you wanna throw away, it is welcome. And I would like to say that we would like to top off this year better than we did last year. And right now, we currently have every dumpster manned, and we have enough people to go out into the community, so this is great. It will be in the newspaper also, and we have tried to get all-- we actually got 500 flyers out during the parade, so it was-- I think everything went well. So, I wanna thank everybody that had a part in it, because you can't do it alone. And this is the t-shirts. This is how they will look. It has our little logo on the front. It has all our sponsors on the back, and if you're one of the first 50 to sign up, you'll get a t-shirt. So, thank you.
Okay. All right.
I have one thing. Stephanie, Kevin from French Brothers presented us with that presentation about the setbacks. Whatever happened with that? Do you remember?
It got approved. It was through the PUD.
Did it get approved?
You guys remember that? It got approved.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, it's approved.
And then, I guess there's some weeds on scenic extension as well, on the sidewalks?
Some weeds?
Yeah, like weeds. Weeds and gourds.
And speaking of French Brothers, I saw the other day, I actually posted on the mayor's page, they did a little community cleanup themselves. I don't know if you guys saw that or not, but--
I didn't.
Yeah, they-- yeah, I thought that was really cool, and so I reposted it. But shout-out to those businesses that are doing that stuff for our community. That was very cool. Anyway, okay. Anybody else have anything? I was up to my eyeballs in change of commands. I was like, is this ever gonna stop? Are we just like, are we gonna have a whole new base? But there was quite a few. Apparently, my understanding is there's 22, I think, between the-- yeah, I think there was 22 this year, or this season. I did not go to 22, but there were 22 this season. So, a lot going on at the base as well. And if nobody else has anything, okay, we're gonna move on. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they wanna pull off the consent agenda? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote, please?
Commissioner Burnett, how do you vote?
I must have clicked on, sorry.
And motion passes seven zero. We have nothing removed from the consent agenda, so we'll move on to new business. Consider-- item nine, consider and act upon an appeal by Linmark for two billboard signs located at 821 U.S. Highway 70 West and 200 U.S. Highway 54. Eric, you are here. That's right.
Yes, ma'am.
I gotta get used to it. I apologize. I knew you were here. Sorry about that. You have some information for us?
Absolutely. So, Madam Mayor, Madam Pro Tem, city commissioners, good evening. Thank you for letting me get up here and speak. This is my first meeting. I apologize if I got a little bit of jitters. One quick correction on the business. It says 200 U.S. Highway 54. That's supposed to be 2200 U.S. Highway 54.
I thought that was a little weird, but I was just reading the agenda, so.
The case before you, which, again, if you've reviewed the entire packet, bravo, because that was a lot of information. This is an appeal for a decision. The two double-decker billboard signs, originally the packets were submitted and denied in October of 2024 by Acting City Manager, Dr. Hernandez. So, this is an appeal from Linmark to go in front of the city commission yourselves to try and get that reversed. So, before-- this was before my time, so for comments and any kind of questions, I am actually going to bring up the Linmark representatives, Mr. James Spence and Mrs. Angie Duncan for comments. Their questions would be better directed to them. So, sir, ma'am?
My name's James Spence. This is Angie Duncan. We're with Linmark Companies, or billboards, if you will. Thank you for letting us come and speak with you this evening. We appreciate your time. We know we provided a lot of information to you, and I don't wanna necessarily go through all of that. We did that for background for you, for more than anything. You know, really, what this come down for us that we'd like for you to consider is just a couple of things. One, there was a moratorium in place. That moratorium expired on-- Angie, you helped me with the dates.
September 26.
September 26, 2024. Our application was placed for the two billboards on--
September 27, 2024.
September, the day after it expired. As we went on, we ended up getting a-- there was some correspondence back and forth, but basically, we were denied stating that the city was in the process of establishing a new moratorium, which went into place on October--
Eight.
Eight. So, we applied during the timeframe when there was no moratorium in place for two locations that are zoned properly, and the ordinance allows billboards, but yet we were denied for a moratorium that was not in place. And so, really, that's what our appeal is. So, we're happy to answer any questions that there might be, but anything you wanna add to that? Does that give you enough as far as, I mean, instead of going through the whole packet for you?
Is the-- comment for Stephanie. Is the moratorium currently in place right now, or is it expired? There's only six months, right?
Stella brought it back in March, I believe. So, there's one currently.
There's one current. When does it expire?
We brought it back in March, six months, so.
So, next month, maybe?
September?
Sorry, yeah.
Okay.
And Eric actually has it on his desk, the actual signed ordinance to review, and there were some changes that needed to be made. So, Eric and I are working on the final version of the ordinance.
So, are these kind of out a little bit? They're kind of out a little bit, right? They're not--
Looked like one is kinda out by the old surplus city. Is that correct? And then one is out by, like, Stay Cool, out there on the old Sun City furniture for all the old timers.
Is that where they're at?
Where they wanna place them?
Yeah, like in that area, somewhere in those areas.
So, the locations, if you're actually zooming on them from the map, one of them is across the street from the new All Subs on Highway 70.
Yes.
And one is at the Stay Cool. It's right in front of the Stay Cool Storage Unit on Highway 54.
Which is the old Sun City.
The old Sun City furniture, yeah.
Okay.
And so, another reason it was denied, if you recall, when I was the Acting City Manager, Rick was still here, the billboard that went up on Indian Wells, there was a lot of citizens that called, probably all of you, and called Rick. They called me. And so, we were putting the moratorium in, so did let it expire for that week or so, or whatever it was. So, it was denied based on, you know, the beautification and all of that. I don't know if Darryl has any information you wanna provide?
No, the purpose is, and I have to commend Linmark, they've been very professional in dealing with some of these frustrations. It was denied solely because of the backlash that we received from the public. And so, in seeking this appeal, because it was an administrative appeal, as they correctly mentioned, the moratorium was lifted, so they were fully right to submit their permit and their request. But because it was denied administratively, we wanted to let them present their case to the elected officials who represent the citizens of the community. And that is where we had, or our office, the city has received the most complaints, but we felt that this decision should be made by the commission, so we decided to go to this appeal route, so that Linmark could make their case, and that the elected populace, or the elected body could make the decision.
Yeah, the one on Indian Wells, that's Michael Passton, and he's the owner of that building, and he called me in a panic and said, "They're killing me on Facebook. What do I do?" I said, "I mean, that's a pretty giant sign. You can't just take it down, so I guess you're stuck with it." But he was in a panic over that. My thing with billboards is I don't, like, if they're out of town, I don't have a real issue with it.
How I feel on these, is they're more on the outskirts of town.
Right.
It's not as big of a deal as it is on Indian Wells.
But that big old thing on Indian Wells, I can't even--
You know, the one on 70 out there by the old surplus city across from the All Subs, eh. But the one out on 54, just past Stay Cool, I mean--
Yeah, I honestly don't. Well, personally, I don't really have an issue with that.
You're not blocking anything out there.
That makes sense to me.
The only thing, though, is our ordinance with our airport, how high can they-- how tall are these?
If there's ever issue with the airport, we have to get FAA clearance for that?
Yeah, the one on 54 might be in line with our runway.
That's something that we always check in our due diligence process as we move into construction. So, if we have to do that, that's something that's just done as part of our normal.
And that's gonna be a double-decker?
Yes.
Yeah, because that one, that would be the only issue I see with that one out there is you are in line with the way those planes take off.
But you'd be surprised with airports, how close billboards are. And, you know, most of the time, if there is something that's in there, they'll have you put a light on top. But, I mean, we do the study and everything that's needed for it, so that's all conducted.
Fifty feet tall.
I guess the biggest thing, you know, for us is that you set your ordinances based on what everybody else is to follow, and we follow that. And so, you know, and I understand that, you know, some people, they look at it, like you mentioned the billboard on Indian Wells. I will also tell you, we had a huge demand for people wanting to rent that billboard.
Oh, I'm sure.
So, I mean--
And usually, the backlash fades.
You know--
No, I don't doubt that there's a huge demand to rent it. I think everybody's frustration was, well, first of all, there isn't another one on Indian Wells, so that was almost like a-- not, I don't mean a slap in the face, like an insult. I mean, like, ooh.
Because it's big.
It's there, right?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. And the view of the mountains, I mean, there are a lot of things that it does obstruct. I mean, I, you know, I think if it had been a single, it probably wouldn't have, you have, or he wouldn't have gotten so much backlash. But that big old giant thing on Indian Wells, yeah, no, I think it's unsightly personally, but, and I'm sure people wanna rent it. There's no doubt. But for me, I don't like it, so that's just my opinion.
Commissioner Rarden, in preparation for this, Delta, our consultant for the airport, reached out and said that the sign, the heights and everything was okay.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's like 100 or 150 feet, but this says it's only like 50 feet high, so. But were both of these applications in during that little break in the moratorium?
Yes.
From September to October?
I think it came as one.
Yeah, the day after.
The day after the moratorium ended.
And they're not violating any of the other ordinances as far as, the only thing was the moratorium?
So, it'll still be in place if we approve this?
Yes, sir, because this was in between that, we gish that it was.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have any questions? All right, does anybody else have any questions?
If I could just add one thing, we work with city municipalities in many states to help them craft ordinances that work for what you want. And so we did make that offer as well, to come alongside, even if it's just as an advisory, because I understand that, you know, there's certain things. But we're happy to take what your concerns are, help you draft an ordinance that protects what's important to you, you know, but still allows, you know, perhaps billboards in a certain area. Or like you mentioned, you didn't like the stacked billboard, or perhaps the size, or, you know, whatever that might be. We're happy to come alongside and work with y'all, to come up with something that works, so that you don't... Because the moratoriums are really, they're meant for a short period of time, but if you go back and look at your history, it's been there, I mean, every six months.
But there's a reason for that. So way back, I'd like to say way back in the, I've been on commission almost 10 years, but back, I'm gonna say maybe 17, 18, something like that, we tried to draft an ordinance, and I don't know if it was Linmark or who's the other billboard company? There was another...
We don't know of any other billboard companies. But we heard there allegedly, there's a few.
I think that billboard company that we don't know about, actually, we tried to draft an ordinance, and that billboard, I don't think it was Linmark, I'm pretty sure it was the other one that we don't know about, that said that we're silencing their free speech and we can't do that along White Sands Boulevard and... I mean, there was just like this whole thing. And so we said, "Okay, so how do we get around it?" So that's why we have a moratorium. That was the whole reason why this moratorium gets renewed every six months, because of that we could legally do. If that other billboard place that we don't know about is not an issue, then...
Well, it doesn't, I mean, I think if you draft one, I mean, obviously, you would have something that would follow all the legality that you have to have in it. But again, you know, that's something, if it's, you know, if it's important, we're happy to come alongside with the city manager and give our, you know, or the city attorney, whoever you would like us to work with, we're happy to help you craft something that works for you, instead of having to do your moratorium and then, you know, kind of kick the can down the road again and then have to do it and so forth. And it gives you kind of a, I guess, the peace of mind that, you know, if anything is built from that point forward, that, you know, it's gonna be built under the terms that you set up.
Actually, this issue goes back quite a bit further than that. I remember 2013, there was one that was drafted, and it just was, it was very difficult, because my idea of what looks good and your idea of what looks good is, everybody's ideas different, so nobody could really come to a general consensus.
Yeah, because there was a whole discussion about business signs, too, I remember.
Well, you know, you drive down White Sands Boulevard, just the road signs, is a lot of it. You know, it just clutters everything, but those two big double-deckers that they built, I think those were the ones you're talking about in 17. They built one down there kind of by Applebee's, I think it is.
By Bluestone.
Bluestone, and then another one right out there off of, right there by Ralph's, I think it is, by the Walmart. And those are the two that kind of got everybody riled up.
Yeah, that guy from that other billboard company, that doesn't exist.
Is it Bismarck?
Didn't like me very much, that's for sure.
I think it's called Bismarck, isn't it? Bismarck? Does that sound familiar?
No, I don't know what it was called.
I think that's what it's called.
Because it exists, so I don't know what it was called. I just told that man I didn't like his double-decker signs, that's all.
I think you purchased them.
Yes, we did.
Anyway. All right, does anybody else have any questions? No?
I'll make a motion to approve item number nine.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Burnett.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson. Did you get that, Dylan?
Could you clarify the motion if you're...
So we have a motion to...
To approve the two billboard locations.
To approve the appeal.
To approve the appeal, I guess is it.
To approve item nine.
Guess it is an appeal.
Motion from Commissioner Burnett, and then a second from Commissioner Robinson. Okay. Oh, I have to switch. And motion passes seven zero. We're good? All right. Sorry, I'm still not a big fan of double-decker billboards, but they're okay on the outskirts of town. We're good, so... All right, we're gonna move on to item 10, consider and act upon Resolution 2025-19 adopting an infrastructure capital improvement plan and identifying the top five recommended capital outlay projects for fiscal year 2027 through 2031.
Hi, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners. So I do not have a grant coordinator right now, so you get to see me present to you the Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, or the ICIP. So this is something that we bring every year in front of the commission, where we ask departments to submit their projects. And then it's really a two-part operation. We ask them to put their projects on here, and then from there, we determine the top five recommended capital outlay projects that we will be submitting to the state. We have to have them submitted by the 11th, so by Friday. And we'll submit those to the state, and these are the ones that are then submitted to the state legislature in their session that they have at the beginning of the year. So it's kind of one of those long-drawn-out things. We talk about it now, but it doesn't actually go to the legislature until January of next year. So as you can see on the list, our top five projects this year was Benito Lake Fishing Access and Day Use, the plan, design, repair, construct, and purchase of items to maintain and beautify the exterior of city buildings, procurement of police department vehicles and equipment, plan, design, and construct zoo perimeter fencing runs and gates as needed, and then the Dry Canyon Improvement, Dry Canyon Arroyo Improvements Phase One. And so you see the amounts for those. Obviously, the largest one that we're asking for is the Dry Canyon Arroyo Improvements. That's at $3 million. That project is fully designed, and this would be the first phase of it. The zoo project for $1 million, they have done pieces of that project, but there's still additional fencing that's needed, especially along the west side. The police department, we request vehicles pretty much every year for them, so that is, again, requesting additional vehicles. The city facilities, this would cover at least the library, the senior center, and the rec center. All three buildings need either stucco repairs or some sort of exterior repair to a portion of the building. And then the Benito Lake Access is just to improve the access, if anybody's been up there. Especially, I was up there this weekend, there's a substantial amount of visitors to the lake doing day use fishing. So we want to continue to improve that as much as possible for safety purposes. So if you have any questions, or as you can see, multiple pages after those top five are all the other projects that have been submitted that weren't chosen as, chosen as part of the top five, but are still on the ICIP list, which makes them eligible for other state and federal funding throughout the year.
Typically, with the ICIP stuff, with the legislators, don't they, or is this still around between a half million, three-quarter of a million, that they kind of like to see projects at, or...
So that is, that is where they were a couple of years ago. With the influx of the oil and gas money, we've been seeing a lot larger awards.
A little closer to a million?
Yeah, and so we've been putting larger items on there. Sometimes we don't get fully funded for those items. We'll get, for example, I think we had a million-dollar item on there two years ago, and we got $695,000. So it allows us to at least start doing a phase of it, and then we can put the next phase on the next ICIP.
Yeah, I just like to, I remember in the past, the larger projects, you know, you can't really pigeonhole the money and save it up.
Hundred percent, yeah. They, it has to be, and that is something that is now a rule. The, whatever project you request for has to, that phase of it has to be completed with the amount that you're asking for. So you can't ask three years in a row and then complete one whole project. They have really, really cracked down on that. You have to be able to complete with the money that you have.
Within that year, okay. The, the one for the Dry Canyon Arroyo, what would that entail, that piece of it? Is that just the lower portion of that channel, over off of Canal?
Yes, it's, it's starting to, to get that fully shaped and, I believe, concreted? I don't, I haven't looked it up. Yeah, in concrete.
Okay, so fairgrounds from Canal to Fairgrounds, okay. That's actually really well-needed.
Yes, and that was one of the reasons that it was chosen.
That pond's full over there, too, right now, that one off of, back there where the oasis used to be. That pond is completely full of water. It has been for like the last week, so... I don't know where it's supposed to go once it's in there, but...
Evaporate.
Yeah. It's gonna be a while.
My question was, how much further on the Aurora do you have? I mean, I'm looking at 3 million, but it's, it's a lot more than that.
So on the Arroyo, it was done in, designed in three phases. So there is, Phase Two is estimated at 3.8, and Phase Three is estimated at 2.5. Obviously, we'll know more if, if this does get funded. We'll know more about how much it costs when we get through the bid phase, and those might be numbers that we have to adjust.
Well, I know it doesn't mean anything when you hear something, but I, I had heard that they wanted to fund, you know, anything that had to do with water, and that is a water project, and I, I just...
It's, it's a drainage project.
It's drainage.
Well, it's still water.
I'm not even gonna turn and look at tape.
So that's, I just wanted to know what, this is Phase One, and I just wanted to know how much more. So we couldn't ask for this, like, next year?
We could. If, if we have Phase One gets approved this year, we could turn around and ask for Phase Two next year. Or we could also turn around and ask for federal funds, if there's federal infrastructure funds. We could turn around and say, "Okay, we have state funding for this. Can we get federal funding for the next one?" You know, there's, there's options. If it's on the ICIP list, there's options. And that is something going forward. We're in the process of doing a full revamp on our capital process and on our ICIP list. So it's gonna be something that's gonna look vastly different when we bring it next year, so that we can, we can go forward and actually start treating it as an actual capital improvement plan, instead of a one-time, do it for, for the legislature, and that will open more funding for us as well.
Anybody else have any questions?
We thought about putting any of the water projects on there, like the parallel pipeline, or...
We did, we did discuss that. So we're currently working on closing on a $12 million Water Trust Board loan to do the next section of pipe, and so we're kind of focused on, on handling that. But yes, there, there was discussion.
Every little bit helps, you know?
Every little bit does help.
We don't, you're talking about the parallel pipe? Yes, the parallel.
Well transmission line, that's what we're trying to get.
Yes, yes, you're right. We are trying to, we're trying to standardize, because it's been referred to as the snake tank line, the parallel pipeline, the well transmission line. So we are trying to standardize it as well transmission.
Well transmission line, okay.
How many miles will 12 and a half million get us, will that get us all the way there?
No.
Just to...
Well, 12 and a half will get us how many?
Three miles.
It gives five miles?
And then how many more do we still need?
11 after that.
And what will that do when it's done?
It will move water to wherever we choose to have the RO plant.
The what? I'm sorry, the what?
The reverse osmosis, otherwise known as the desaline plant.
The desalination plant. This is what, yeah.
There is a decision.
So we're working on it, aren't we?
We're always working on it.
And so I believe, Dave can correct me, we're closing on the 12 million loan for this, this one, and then we're in design for the second, the next phase. And then, so once we get that going, I mean, we're working on it, but you're talking a lot of money, so we're phasing it.
Absolutely. How much money is that? Do we know?
Oh, we're probably gonna be like 50 billion.
Yeah, at least 25 million, based off current construction. And there will be, there will be a time where a decision will need to be made if we want to leave the current RO technology that we have at the plant that was built off of Lovell, or if we want to relocate it to a location that makes more sense in terms of actual water movement.
Say so much about that, okay.
But that, that's a conversation for Director Nunnly to have with you another day.
Absolutely. There's a reason why I'm asking. I keep...
I know. Oh, I know.
...beat up over a desaline plant. Anyway, all right, it's fine. Okay, does anybody else have any questions? No, everybody's good. Do we have a motion to approve item 10?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Robinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Guthrie. Can we put up the vote, please?
Great, thank you, guys.
Thank you. And motion passes seven zero. Okay, we're gonna move on to item 11, adjourn into executive closed session in compliance, in compliance with 10-15-1, NMSA to discuss current litigation Nelson versus the City of Alamogordo. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mayor Protem McDonald, sorry about that. Can we put up the vote, please? And motion passes seven zero. We are adjourned.